All right, good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 and we are going to call the May 6, 2013 City Council Meeting to Order. If you'll please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have four proclamations tonight and we're going to start with Distinguished Young Women of Payne County. Okay. Oh, no. Whereas the Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Scholarship Program is held each March to honor the best and brightest high school junior girls in Payne County. This countywide scholarship program recognizes, rewards, and encourages excellence while promoting self-esteem among these young women. The Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Program occurred on Saturday, March 9, 2013, with seven Payne County High School Juniors participating, four from Stillwater, two from Perkins, and one from Ripley. And whereas Ms. Olivia Fletcher, daughter of Sherri Fletcher and Terri Spears of Stillwater, was selected as the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2014. And whereas by being selected the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2014, Ms. Fletcher will be involved in community service, speaking engagements around Payne County, performing at various events, and presenting the "Be Your Best Self" message of self-confidence and commitment to Payne County schoolchildren. She will encourage young people to make a commitment to do their best to be involved, be studious, be healthy, be ambitious, and be responsible. It includes but is not restricted to encouraging young people as they face the challenges of dealing with negative peer pressure and avoiding the perils of the abuse of alcohol and other drugs. And whereas by being selected the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2014, Ms. Fletcher is automatically entered in the Distinguished Young Women of Oklahoma Scholarship Program to be held July 23 through 27, 2013, in Bartlesville, Oklahoma. Ms. Fletcher will compete for the Oklahoma State Title in the categories of fitness, interview, self-expression, talent, and scholastics. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the 6th Day of May, 2013, as Olivia Fletcher Day. Congratulations.
I just would like to say that I really look forward to representing Payne County and I hope that I can influence others to be their best selves. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is in connection with Community Action Agency and Brenda, I can't read, Brenda Mutai Hall. Whereas Community Action Agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law. And whereas Community Action Agencies have a 49-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income. And whereas Community Action Agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Oklahoma by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs. And whereas Community Action Agencies are needed as a major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it. And whereas welfare reform in Oklahoma has benefited from the state's partnership with Community Action Agencies. And whereas the limited income continued to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity. And whereas Oklahoma and the entire United States must continue to wage war on poverty by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim in Stillwater, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, the month of May, 2013, as Community Action Month. Congratulations.
I would just like to thank the Stillwater community for all their help and support and for keeping our programs going. Thank you.
Any other museum representatives that would like to come up? That'd be great. We're going to work out our wherlasses tonight, aren't we? Whereas Oklahoma is home to over 500 museums and cultural organizations that are located in every region of the state, serving as educational institutions, preservation agencies, agencies of scientific research, and cultural centers. And whereas Stillwater, Oklahoma, is home to award-winning institutions such as the Shorear Museum of Stillwater History, as well as the Stillwater Airport Memorial Museum, the Stillwater High School CE Don Art Museum and Alumni Association, the National Wrestling Hall of Fame and Museum, the Gardner Art Gallery, OSU Botanical Garden, and the Oklahoma Wonderatorium. And whereas Stillwater museums forge relationships with community partners such as schools, libraries, community centers, and neighborhood and social service organizations to foster civic understanding and community pride. And whereas Stillwater museums represent a multitude of disciplines and learning experiences and are vital to the preservation, interpretation, and presentation of Stillwater's heritage. And whereas Stillwater museums contribute significantly to the livability and economic viability of the Stillwater community and surrounding region by creating jobs and attracting tourists, local visitors, and businesses. And whereas the Shorear Museum of Stillwater History and the Oklahoma Museums Association have served to bring important recognition of this commemorative week and invite all museums, Stillwater residents, and local businesses and leaders to use this milestone to recognize and celebrate the contributions of Stillwater museums as they serve the community of Stillwater, the state of Oklahoma, the nation, and the world. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through 18, 2013, as Stillwater Museums Week in recognition of the Declaration of Oklahoma Museums Week and the celebration of Stillwater's outstanding museums and their contributions to the community, and urge Stillwater residents to participate and celebrate the contributions that museums make to the great city of Stillwater. Congratulations.
I want to thank the City of Stillwater and the community in general for their continued support of the Shorear Museum. Without that kind of support, we could not be here, operating for 39 years now, preserving Stillwater's history. And next week, as we celebrate Museums Week, we will also be debuting all-new exhibits at the museum. We've been working on this for a year and a half now and it's finally, finally coming to an end as we celebrate that opening with a ribbon cutting on Thursday, May 16, at 4:30 with the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, and we invite everyone to attend. Thank you.
You recognize the ones that rode. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. And whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas cyclists throughout our City of Stillwater and the nation are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2013, in the City of Stillwater as National Bike Month, and Friday, May 17, 2013, as Stillwater Bike-to-Work Day, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance and benefits of bicycling in our community and to be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city for giving us this proclamation, and I would like to invite the entire community to join us in our events this month, our Bike-to-Work events, our Ride of Silence, and the other events that we have going on. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want a copy of that photo.
Whereas that takes us down to the consent docket. Oh, whoops. That takes us down to the consent docket. We have items A through E on the consent docket. Any councilors wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion on the consent docket?
I would move approval.
They have a motion and a second to approve consent docket.
Chief Bradley, I'm particularly happy to see item B. Just for clarification, the agenda online showed an item F on the consent docket of a audit letter. It did not get on the hard copy, so we have moved that to a future agenda item to make sure we were consistent.
That takes us down to public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing, and we have some there. David Hatfield.
Mayor, council members, my name is David Hatfield. I'm retired from the Perry Fire Department and I represent Casco Fire Equipment. There were two companies that turned in bids for the fire department SCBA's. Casco turned in a bid that was $40,817 less than the other bid. Chief Bradley was afraid that the maintenance on the MSA air packs was going to be quite expensive. Talked to our company, they emailed Chief Bradley on April 23rd, said that regards to the ownership, we can offer the following. If Casco performs annual flow test, we will cover the annual and three-year recommended overhauls at no charge. So the maintenance washes out. Between the other company and Casco, the maintenance is zero. MSA believes that you should perform maintenance on your equipment, especially equipment that the firefighters' lives depend on. Chief Bradley said he wasn't for sure how to figure out how much air the air packs use per day, per week. MSA will provide the equipment for him where he can do a printout. It tells him exactly when the air pack was turned on, the time it was turned on, and how many minutes it was used, so he can keep an accurate account of each air pack and how much air was used per air pack. The biggest discrepancy in the two bids was the maintenance. The other company says, "We don't require any maintenance." I was fire chief for 11 and a half years in Perry, and the number-one thing was our fire trucks and our SCBA's. The SCBA's is what the firefighters depend on with their life. I appreciate you letting me come before you, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I will leave a copy of this. The Deputy City Clerk, that be okay?
Would, I'd like to see that.
One of them is an email from the MSA representative after he found out we said we would provide the maintenance, and this one is a copy of the printout that they can get for an air pack.
And that would depend on the department's SOP, whether they did it quarterly or annually.
Mr. Dorman, were our bidding rules followed on this?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think some of that information was available after the bids were opened.
That's correct.
We can't accept anything after a bid opening. It constitutes negotiation, which we can't do.
On to our other public comment not scheduled for public hearing, Kelly Harris.
Good evening. Kelly Harris at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner of the tract of land that is on your agenda for general orders, 8A. This was a request to rezone a property addressed at 1100 East Virginia Avenue. If you recall, this came before you in March as a rezoning to RTM District, and we had come up that night and asked for you to consider RT zoning district. After that meeting, there were a lot of discussions still between the neighbors and myself and exactly what kind of process needed to be filed. There was a mention of a senior overlay district that the city could possibly have done by now, so it was tabled until tonight, and I just wanted to fill you in with what has happened since March. We are still requesting the RT zone, which just allows basically duplex structures and single-family homes, and it would require a final plat process, so only one principal structure per lot. So since March, we've pursued several avenues, whether that was the senior overlay district. The one that's been acceptable to both the neighbors and the owner is filing of a restrictive covenants on the property. We are in the process of getting that done. While filing the covenants doesn't really have anything to do with your potential vote tonight, I did want to let you know what was going on, the conversations between us and the neighbors, what the restrictive covenants would look like. It would state the minimum age that is allowed to live in those duplexes, which is 62, and then it would also state that if the owner is unsuccessful of obtaining his tax grant, that he would take the land back through the zoning process and rezone it to RSS. So he would take it back. That is just to ease the neighborhood's mind. If you do vote to approve the RT zone, then that age restriction may not be there, it would just be a straight rezoning action. This would give the neighbors some sense of ease. We hope that we would bring it back to RSS. That way, they won't be stuck with a straight RT zone, which they don't want. While it was our goal to have this filed at the courthouse today, we did not accomplish that. The neighbors are upset with me for not having that done today, and I do apologize, but I do have the owner's promise that it will be done as soon as the attorney has that drafted. We have given the attorney the notice to proceed to finalize that document. If you feel more comfortable pushing this back for two more weeks, as long as you push it back with a set date in mind to bring it back, that would be acceptable. But however, if you are ready to vote on it, we would prefer that you go ahead and do that tonight. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
So right now, the application is for RTM.
Yes, but we are requesting that you grant RT zone. Any other questions? Please feel free to call me back up during the rest of this phase or down later on the agenda when you bring it back up to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next request is from Becky Teak.
Becky Teak, 1702 Glenwood Court, a little house cleaning first. I did give you a four-page handout. I would like that to be part of the record if I could, please, formally. Number two, also, if you have any further questions of me, if this discussion goes any further, please feel free to pull me back. We were extremely disappointed this evening. When we met with the council in the March 4 date, it was much bigger than a senior overlay going into this. I can't tell you, my heart's personally broken. I think it would have been good for Stillwater. I have no answers back and I'm personally frustrated. I would not like to drop the ball tonight on senior overlay district, even though it's not a possibility nor a vehicle tonight for this. Because of the lack of information, communication, or solution that we sought from the city, both Kelly and I, numerous, numerous times, we have no solution, and Kelly and I agreed, her client, the neighborhood, that we would do it with a deed restriction, with a private attorney, with the neighbors paying for it. That was a discussion that I had and agreed to with Kelly probably around the middle of April. I truly felt it would be filed tonight. I have heard you many a time say, "How can I be for or against something if I haven't seen the document?" Why is it the document here? I don't know. This is a debacle after debacle. I can't get it right. Kelly can't get it right. City can't get it right. It's a senior housing project coming to Stillwater that's taken over three months. It almost brings me to tears. What does it take? This is what I ask tonight. I can't stand up here and say I'm proud of Joel and Kelly. I'm not. Kelly let me down. I can live with that. But Joel needs to understand that something that is not filed tonight, that is not filed today, does not give us security tomorrow. If you've got, if we can postpone, please do so. I think we've racked it up privately. Do I think that's the best way for smart plan, for guarantee of quality of life, for deed restrictions? Do I think deed restrictions need to be placed on individual properties against certain projects? No, I don't. But that's a way to do this because we have no other vehicle. I'm not going to talk about that. I was very passionate about it last time I was down here, and again, I'm disappointed. If you're going to vote on RT, then put it on moratorium and vote it down. We do not want another, and you forced me into doing it. I sell this property. I believe in Stillwater. We don't need another Teal Ridge. We've got to rethink this. Young professionals don't live in the project on Jardo and Lakeview. Young professionals don't live where the traffic is clogged and it is dangerous on Glenwood, west of Boomer. An RT allows him to sell it and do with it whatever he may, and they're going to ask for one more step. Please either, number one, deny straight zoning requests if it continues tonight, or please set it to a date, two weeks from now, when that deed restriction is filed. Again, we agreed upon that around the middle of April. Thank you.
Next request is from Marcia Teak.
My name is Marcia Teak. I live at 1116 East Hanson Street in Camden Pond, an addition that abuts the property that is being considered tonight. I've been up here, and I've been up here, and I don't think I can add anything to what Becky said. Maybe I can. Y'all know the history. I think every one of you know the history of what that neighborhood went through four years ago. We dealt with very, very, very dishonorable people. We were lied to, we were conned, we were treated terrible, but we managed to win, and that's part of the reason we feel like we do today. We probably are a bit paranoid. Anybody ought to be able to understand that, I think. But we were told when we met here March the 4th that city staff, city council, was going to look into a senior housing overlay. We have other overlays in the city. We've got high-rise apartment overlays, we've got parking overlays. Why could we not come up with a senior? It was not for just this one project. It was for Stillwater as a whole. We have had other senior projects that have had some difficulties at City Hall, and that would have solved some of the problems. We tried to tout ourselves as a retirement community, and well, we should be. We've got OSU, sports, the fine arts, we've got the Shorear Center, we've got little leagues that people can go enjoy sports there, and we've got wonderful medical facilities, great for seniors. We tout ourselves as a community that is attracting seniors, but apparently, we don't give much care to what the seniors' housing is. This is a senior housing project. An overlay would have been perfect. The developer was excited about it, we were excited about it, but what happened to it? To my knowledge, not one person that was here that night that felt like that a senior overlay would work has been contacted for any input. I don't think there's been one person, not one person that I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of the neighbors. But I'm here tonight to ask, please do not approve that without that deed being filed. It needs to be filed, not it's going to be filed, it will be filed, we're fixing to file it. It's got to be put of record before the neighbors feel good about that project. Now, I would ask that you postpone a vote on it tonight until such time as it's put of record, or vote no on the proposed request. Thank you.
Next request is from Richard Teak.
Richard Teak, 1116 East Hanson. There's one fact to remain to this issue. The deed restriction has not been filed, and we ask that you postpone. Kelly suggested it. It's a workable solution. Postpone it for two weeks, and we get the deed restriction signed. Postpone it for two weeks, and we get the deed restriction signed, and we'll be in favor of this project, and it would be a nice project for the city of Stillwater. Thank you.
Next request is from Glenda Rowe.
I don't think I can answer what's over there.
Okay, thank you. And Bobby Rowe.
I can't add a great deal to what the ones preceding me have said, but I just want to reinforce again that this is in my backyard. I'm the closest to this particular project, and I'm wholeheartedly in favor of the project, but I want it signed before it is official. That's like, that's, that's it.
And then our last request is from David Beckwald.
I'm Dave Beckwald from 222 North Donaldson Street. I live near this property in question. I will not add a lot to what has already been said, but I, I want to mention that I did play a major role in the zoning matter having to do with Campus Crest, which of course now is located just adjacent to this property in question. That was a very bitter experience for us people in the neighborhood, even though we were successful in fighting that zoning. But I want to make it clear, the neighborhood, most neighborhood people are not opposed to the senior housing project. During the Campus Crest matter, we heard a lot about, well, not in my backyard, that we were just against any development. We just wanted to look at the deer in the woods there. That is not the case. As a matter of fact, I have a, have a relative living in another Walker complex on Virginia Street, a few blocks away from this. She's very, my relative is very happy with those accommodations. So we're not opposed to this or any other building. We just really are, feel adamant that we want some kind of assurance that a senior housing project is what's going to go in here. The developer had every opportunity in the world to get this document, or the documents, perhaps plural, filed on time. They failed to do it, for whatever reason, lack of professionalism or whatever. That's their problem. I ask that you not reward them for whatever their problem was by giving them a zoning change tonight. At a minimum, please delay this for two weeks or vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all our requests to speak. We do not have any items, removing consent doc in the no public hearing, so that does take us down to general orders. And the first one is request rezoned property is 1000 East Virginia.
Thank you. Good evening, Paula Dennison, Development Services. I will just quickly recap again what you have already heard from the previous speakers regarding this project. This is a map amendment request at 1000 East Virginia Avenue. It was postponed from the March 4th, 2013 city council meeting. This again is the location of the property in the hatched area. Hall of Fame does not extend all the way to the property. The access will be a new street on the partial right-of-way and additional from Virginia and Berdick is how the access will be taken. An aerial view of the property. As you can see, Hall of Fame ends here as it goes into now the Grove Apartment Complex. This is the existing Walmart on Perkins Road, and this is the access that will be improved to access the property as proposed. Couple of things to note that have been part of previous discussions and a couple addressed tonight. As Kelly indicated, the request is RTM, which is two-family and multifamily residential district. On the screen, you can see the amended request as verbally provided at the last meeting and, or excuse me, at the March 4th meeting. And again, tonight for the RT, the items in black are the items, the uses that are allowed by right in each of the respective zoning districts, the RT and the RTM. In purple are the uses that are allowed with a specific use permit. One thing I will note, SUP or specific use permit does require the process to be somewhat similar to a map amendment, but followed where it's a public hearing advertised for the Planning Commission and the city council, as well as neighbors are noticed. So any of these SUP uses for any straight zoning, there would be another public hearing in order for those to be allowed under either the RT or the RTM, and I just wanted to make that point. The conventional single-family manufactured home and duplex in the RT, multifamily with maximum density of 20 units per acre, and duplexes and townhomes are the residential uses that are allowed in the RTM. Public hearing was held at the March 4th city council meeting. That public hearing was closed. The Planning Commission did send a recommendation of denial of the RTM request. Again, the applicant has asked for RT to be considered in lieu of the RTM request. And Kelly mentioned it also, that under the RT, if that were to be applied, the RT, straight zoning, as we call it, would require that the property be subdivided or platted in order to construct more than one duplex on this property. In other words, they would have to come through, preliminary plat would have to be approved at the Planning Commission level, final plat would come to the Planning Commission and to the city council. They would have street design, water, sewer, storm drainage, sidewalks, everything in a typical subdivision plat, and that's what would be required. So there would be additional processes that would have to be gone through before a building permit could be issued for the property. And again, that's with the RT. Well, the questions at the March 4th meeting was the difference between RT and RTM if it has similar uses to meet the purpose of this request. Plating is a big difference. Under the RTM, multiple principal structures or duplexes in, in the request can be placed on a parcel of ground without having to subdivide. So that's what Kelly had referenced when she said it would have to be platted or subdivided. In regards to the senior housing overlay, staff did quite a bit of research. There are many forms of senior housing that are available. Those were identified and taken to the Land Development Ad Hoc Committee. That is a staff and joint council, couple members of council, as you know, committee for working on these issues that's brought up. That committee did meet a number of times, discussed the varying opportunities or forms of senior housing, whether it's overlay, new zoning districts, additional zoning districts, whatever the case may be. In the research, staff found that the purpose of senior housing overlay in particular is to encourage development of senior housing, not to restrict who has the right to live in a development. Because of that difference, that purpose, the type of overlay requested could not be accomplished, so you do not have a proposal for senior housing overlay on the table at this time for this particular map amendment request.
Would you, would you say that last part again, the difference between what's the purpose of an overlay and then the restriction?
What we found in our research, the purpose of a senior housing overlay is to encourage development of senior housing opportunities, not to restrict who has the right to live in those developments. And that's all I have before you this evening. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Hope that we have cleared up some of the RT versus RTM differences that are laid out before you this evening. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
It's time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Got some?
I do have a question. When you were meeting for the overlay, when the ad hoc committee was meeting, once you found that it wasn't the right purpose restriction, um... Did anybody go back to the neighbors and say, "We can't do it like this"? So they could, is it just one way, or could they have rewritten something, and, or is it just one, overlay is one way and that's it?
I did not personally have any additional conversations in regards to the discussions in the ad hoc committee. I will, not to be obtuse, but I will have to defer to the two members of the council that are in that ad hoc committee, because I, as a staff member, will just leave it at their door for any, any discussion of what occurred in those meetings.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Talk about covenants a little bit. I know there's, can be lots of confusion about covenants and, and what restrictions they really have.
As city government, private covenants, we do not enforce those. We have no jurisdiction over private restrictions, private covenants, deed restrictions whatsoever. It's not part of the zoning. Zoning cannot be applied condition to covenants being filed, because that is an illegal zoning action at that time. The, the covenants that are discussed here this evening, it's a private matter, and that's solely what it becomes, is the property owner and the neighbors working out whatever they deem appropriate to be worked out. The city steps out of that discussion completely.
Would the private owner have any responsibility to do that before it was zoned? That's where I'm being confused, is that I don't want the cart to get before the horse.
The city, the city can't require a property owner to have covenants, can?
No, not in this instance, and particularly in the scenario where it would be, would be restrictive, possibly in violation of, of federal law. So there's no way you can condition the zoning on that.
You just brought up a dirty word. You said possible violation of federal law.
The Federal Fair Housing Act is the thing that enables you to have this exclusionary zoning to begin with, but it's based upon this, what Paula said. Paula probably articulated it better than I can do it. It's the idea that you're trying to encourage this development. You can't use it as a shield to try to protect neighboring neighborhoods or residents or things like that. And, you know, again, I won't get into a lot of detail about what was discussed in ad hoc, except I will say that in the context of, of senior housing, if you think about the scope of senior housing, where you start at, you know, very simp, you know, single-family residences, duplexes, and it goes all the way over to almost institutional-type settings, hospital-type settings, where you have end-of-life care and things like that, you're talking about a lot of different categories that are implicated here. That's what the federal law's looking at. They're looking at these integrated-type communities. And so that's why I'm saying, you know, you can't make, you can't make the covenant a condition of the zoning, and if you do want to consider an overlay, you've got to look at it in a very large scope, in that very inclusionary-type scope.
Mr. Mayor? Nevertheless, an agreement between a potential developer and surrounding neighborhoods is between them, correct?
Yes, sir.
We can't make as a council any action that they may or may not do a condition of the vote, right?
That's true, yes.
That's your, that's your point? But is there anything wrong with us as a council knowing that restrictive covenants have been filed prior to making a vote?
Not at all.
Because where I'm going is, Kelly, I'm thinking that if that document was filed before the May 20th meeting, you know, where we, I would be willing to table the side of pending whatever agreement they reach and vote this thing, RT, one way or the other. But I think in good faith, I think they, it sounds like the neighborhood and the developer have made some, some good progress, and for whatever reason you didn't get it filed today or before today, seems to me a couple of weeks would be ample time to get that done.
I agree with you, Joe.
I, I do have a question for Ms. Harris. Is your applicant entitled to this property right now? Your applicant in, does he own this tract right now?
He owns the property right now.
In whatever entity, form, whatever, but he, okay.
Yes.
And he is voluntarily willing to enter into these covenants?
Yes.
That's going above and beyond.
Thank you.
Why, on the Mar- March 4th meeting, you had said, I watched the video, uh, that you had requested that day for RT, just hadn't you made the decision? So that was 60 days ago?
Mm-hmm.
And it's still, is, is there a reason it wasn't filed for 60 days?
We had given the city an opportunity to discuss the senior overlay district, and when it looked like that was not going to go forward, we had discussed with the neighbors different possibilities and came up with the restrictive covenants, and we just didn't get it filed by today.
Gina, just might mention that the, the idea of RT wasn't known to me as a councilman till minutes before that meeting.
Right.
And I wasn't willing to vote on, I was prepared to vote down RTM that night, but wasn't ready to consider RT. And so I was interested in table, for that reason, the idea of covenants was never something I thought, I recall us discussing. So, I mean, that's...
Yes, tonight is the first time you all have heard, I believe, of the covenants. That's come up since March 4th meeting.
Any other questions for Ms. Harris?
Yes. Kelly, are you saying it's your attorney is drafting the covenants and following them?
It's a joint attorney. The neighbors have agreed to pay his bill, so I guess really it's their attorney.
So the developer's not paying any portion of the bill? Just, that's none of my business for you.
Nope.
I'm just asking.
They have agreed to pay that bill because they, they do want this development. They've been very positive towards that and have worked with us in order to get the assurances in place.
Thank you.
I would like to put one note on the record, please, with Ms. Harris. You can stay up here if you want to. This was negotiated out between a private landowner and the abutting neighbors. It was agreed to. It's been neglected to be done in a timely fashion, and that's why we're disappointed tonight.
We understand.
But, but, okay. But you are absolutely correct, but I do want you to know that in part of that compromise, the neighbors and citizens in Stillwater are willing to pay that attorney fee. So that was part of the compromise.
Can you just stand?
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify.
Ms. Dennison?
Any of the other questions that I might be able to answer, be happy to while I'm standing up here.
On RT, what's the maximum height?
Yes, 35 feet.
35? Somebody else have any questions?
It's time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver?
Questions? All right. I was starting to make a motion earlier.
That, I wanted to get the rest of the questions out of the way.
Okay. And I'm sure the city attorney will correct my language in this, as he is prone to do. I would like to make a motion to table this till the May 20th meeting to reconsider the RT, the RT application.
I would second your motion.
Is that a...
It's not a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, that was the word that got my attention.
Table.
And to reconsider, well, we won't be reconsidering it.
No, sir, you haven't taken the action yet.
But I want to bring it back on the 20th, is my point.
We want to bring, we can make sure the motion says that...
What is the proper wording of a motion to accomplish his goal?
Table this matter until the 20th.
Postponed.
Table till the 20th, where it will be brought back.
Motion by Councilor Weaver. Councilor Scott, did you second it?
I second your motion to table. Until May 20th.
20th.
May 20th. I like table instead of postpone. It's your own motion. It's fine.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think it's, you know, good faith on the part of the owner. It's good faith on part of the neighborhood. Mr. Weaver, you said it a lot better than I ever could. I was sweating bullets trying to figure out how to say it. But if they're willing to work together and all parties concerned are happy, then I definitely think giving them a little bit of time and making it happen, I think that would be, that would make everybody happy. And I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Call for questions.
Let's vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Takes us down to item B, third quarter financial review.
Good evening, I'm Marcy Alexander, CFO for the City of Stillwater. Tonight, I'm here to present the third quarter financial review. This is probably the first quarter in recent memory that I actually have highlights to give you in the general fund, and I'm pretty excited about that. And starting with our sales tax. Our sales tax revenues at the end of the quarter were 7.82% over the quarterly projection. And at the time of this report, they were running 9.39. We lost a little bit of ground in the sales tax from the first quarter. At the end of the first quarter, it was a little bit over 10. But we're not going to argue with the 9.39. That is a highlight, like I said, in a long time. Our use tax is 103.77% of the original budget. And the original budget projection was $860,000. And we revised that up to $1 million. We're also proposing $1 million in the next year's budget. Fines and forfeitures. If you'll remember, last year, you approved a rate increase for many of the fines and forfeitures. And so now, having those in full effect is showing up in our fine and forfeiture revenue, which is 98.12 of the original budget projection. And we also have allowed the payment of fees and also the payment of bonds in the jail to be made by credit card. And that has also contributed to the increase in that revenue. In addition, municipal court has also recently implemented a way to make payments online. And so that is also, we actually did have some people actually paying online before that went live. So we know that that's going to be a popular payment method. Ambulance revenues were over budget. If you remember, we have outsourced the ambulance operation. But these claims were for runs that were incurred prior to that time and insurance being settled. And so it's not a lot of money, but it is more than we budgeted. Licenses and permits are 94.73% of the budget. And this is mostly due to the building permits and for the building and trades. We've had several large developments. So we've had lots of building permits. The other highlight in the general fund are the miscellaneous revenues. And although nothing's changed drastically since the last quarter, the biggest things to hit in that revenue source were our rebate for our purchasing cards. And also, we've sold some city properties. And then water that we're selling at Lake McMurtry shows up in that revenue category. On our total expenditures, total expenditures for the general fund are 66.1% of the original approved budget. So it's well under the 75% mark that we'd expect to see at this time. There have been some revisions made in the general fund. In the city manager's budget, we have made a revision to account for the economic development activities from adding the Economic Development Manager and working on those items in-house. And next year, you'll see those expenditures budgeted in SIDA, the former SIRA. Parking and Rec Administration expenses have been revised. The original budget did not include the contracts for Friends of Lake McMurtry and multi arts. And so those are now reflected in the current year budget. And that's some of the highlights for the general fund. And the other city funds, the lodging tax is 92.91% of the annual target. And it's also been revised to $667,000. That is something that's kind of correlated along with the sales tax. Rural fire fees, subscription renewals have been coming in very well. And a lot of the new utility customers also are signing up for that service. So that's 99.46 of the annual budget. Stormwater and transportation fees are 109.53 and 199.94% ahead of their, or of the annual budget. And that is once again due to several large developments and the payment of those fees. In the Stillwater Utilities Authority, the revenues for the Stillwater Utilities Authority are 83.41% of the original projection, with water or electric being 83.88 and 87.62 for water. And those are well above the second quarter target. Customer service fees continue to outpace their budget. We still have customers that are having difficulty getting their bills paid on time. Operating expenditures for the SUA are 68.4% of the original budget. Once again, staff's holding the line on expenditures there. And in all of the funds that I've mentioned earlier, you have seen in this year's budget several carryforwards from the prior year that have revised that budget. There has been an amendment made in the Water Capital Improvement Fund, the fund that we have rates set aside for capital improvements. And that was per-year action to fund some of the projects in the Southwest Water System. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. There's no action on that item. Takes us down to item three. City of Stillwater Standard Designs Rated Stormwater in Local Streets.
Good evening. Brandon Neal, Water Utility Engineer. What you have before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the Stillwater Standards to the Stormwater Design Criteria. The proposed amendment was brought to us by the development community. And it proposes changing the limits for depth of stormwater to flow in residential streets, local streets specifically. It changes it from the current standard, which is requiring that one full lane remain uncovered by stormwater by design for a 10-year storm. Changes that standard to allowing it to fill all the way to curb depth during a 10-year storm. That's a summary. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is that the only change?
Yes, sir.
I would only ask for clarification. 10-year storm?
Sure. And Paula may want to jump in and help me with terminology. But 10-year storm is also known as the 1% or the 10% chance storm. That means that in any given year, there's a 10% chance that a storm that large could occur, a rain event, a 24-hour rain event. So if, so if a 10-year storm is a five-inch rainfall, that means that there's a 10% chance that five inches or more could fall within 24 hours.
And would ultimately fill it curb to curb?
By design, that would be the maximum.
What does it change?
It changes that, let's say, if in this 10-year storm, if there's a rain event, the design engineer could design it so that in that 10-year storm, the road would be full from curb to curb, top of curb to top of curb. So that's six inches of water in the gutter, almost no water at the center of the street. Under the current standard, it's required to have one full lane width dry, which I think is either 10 feet or 12 feet for a local street. And there would be no standing water on that, no flowing water on that, that there would be visible pavement.
Most likely would be the center of the street where it's crowned, five feet either side of the center.
That's correct.
When we looked at this, when we looked at this, the last time we did the other revisions, when this question came up, I never really got a good answer. And Paula, this may be one for you as well. We say it can't exceed the curb. For how long can it be to the curb?
It could be to the curb for, okay, as the standards are written, it could either, it could be at the curb instantaneously only. It could rise, touch the top of the curb, and then drop. Or it could stay there for a period of time. When you're talking...
That's the period of time?
And there's no limit on the period of time in the standards.
Is there a period now?
No.
As long as you've got that one lane open, we really don't care how long it sits in the outer quarter?
That's correct.
Is that, that's our current standard?
That's the current standard.
Flowing, okay.
Flowing.
Sorry.
Can you give me the background on what the development community's thinking is as far as what all are they having to do in addition to meet the current standard that they wouldn't have to do with this new standard?
The primary one that comes to mind is that they would have to install, with the new standard, they would be able to install fewer curb inlets and less underground stormwater piping. That same standard would apply to us when we design our own streets as well.
So you're in cahoots with them, aren't you?
I, I'll summarize by saying I did my best to look at both sides of the issue. And that was in your packet. And it does, it has upsides and downsides for everybody.
What do you see as the downsides?
Well, of course, if the citizen wanted to come out and visit their car during a 10-year storm and found six inches of water running past their vehicle, they might not like that.
But you could see that now?
Yes. Sure.
Unless you're parked in the center of the street, you're going to see it now.
Right.
It's on future streets.
That's true. Now, this doesn't do anything necessarily to change the streets that we have.
I mean, existing is existing.
Yeah, we're talking about new streets to be designed.
I would, I would add, what do we, what do we gain outside of, obviously, if I'm not making as many taps, I'm not doing as much underground pipe, I can see some financial savings there. But why, why even make the change? If we can keep one lane open strategically, that sounds like a better idea. But what would the advantage be to not having either of them open?
There certainly, there's definitely a strategic advantage, especially for emergency vehicles, to be able to see the pavement you're driving on in an emergency event. On the stormwater side, operation and maintenance-wise, more pipe means more O and M demands on our staff. Got to keep it clean. I mean, if you have a storm drain that fills up with debris, then you might as well not have your storm drain. It means, for the water utility side, I'll speak from my home base. When we are setting water services, that's one more obstacle under the street that we have to... That's right, I just said obstacle, Paula, I'm sorry. That's one more, that's one more underground feature that we have to make sure that we're working around when we're setting things under the street, so...
But this, as I heard, this water is constantly flowing, though, in the design theory.
That's true. This is, consider 12th Avenue in vision. Rain is falling on 12th Avenue. And as you drive down 12th Avenue, you'll see intermittent curb inlets down the street. Those are going to be there designed so that as the rain falls, the farther you go downhill, the more water will be accumulating. Those curb inlets are spaced so that they will catch water, pull it off the road. And the only water that's left leaves a certain design amount of road behind to drive on.
But you brought up 12th Street, but this design change is residential slash local streets only?
That's right. Forgive the confusion. I thought I'd pick an example that people could visualize.
Good example on talking the inlets. But I just wanted to confirm that we're only talking residential here.
That's true. This is local streets only.
Okay.
Well, given that this rain is...
10-year rain, you don't have to worry about closed street, it'll flow.
Yeah, does the last couple of years add into that 10 years? We did not revise the rainfall interval data based on the last two years to determine this.
Good to know, good to know.
The flow of water on the streets, would that in any way, will the repairs for the flow of water like that where it's on the whole street, could that potentially cost the city more repairs?
Yeah, you bring, you bring up an issue that Mr. Peake, our Transportation Director, probably would have had me bring up earlier. The more time that we have water sitting on the street, being moving or otherwise, is water that is potentially working its way through the joints into the subgrade. So having more water flowing on the streets could potentially decrease the life of the street. The magnitude of that, I don't have a good estimate for you. Standing water is considerably more detrimental than moving water, though, because standing water tends to stay around longer.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And there's a resolution later that we can take action on one way or the other.
Thank you.
Speaking of resolutions, takes us to Resolution on A, Resolution CC 2013-5, a resolution authorizing signatories for depositories. Is there a report on this, or is it in the packet? Didn't see a lot of questions. Is there a motion on Resolution 2013-5?
I approve.
A motion second on this resolution. And that passes five to zero. And that takes us to our second resolution, CC 2013-6. And that's about our design and construction standards that we just heard about. Okay. Any discussion or further questions on that?
The only thing I would add, I don't like the idea of both lanes being curb to curb filled up. I particularly do not like the idea of them being designed that way into the future. I definitely, just as a tradesman, I go out when power goes down. And if that street is completely flooded, I can't drive down. I have to wait until the water recedes. I don't, I would not support changing that standard. I think get the stormwater out of there, maintain one lane open, best way to go. I realize it's probably going to be more expensive. But for the longevity of the road, for the safety of the citizens, the emergency services, commercial residential services getting in in the event of a disaster, I think it is essential to get that water out and off the streets as fast as possible. That would be my only thoughts on that resolution.
It's a safety issue.
Any other comments? Is there a motion on Resolution 2013-6?
I'll move its adoption so we can vote.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
It's time, sir.
Okay. Let's vote on this motion. And the motion was to adopt it?
To adopt it.
That's why I wanted to make sure that was the motion. Can we have a redo? That motion passes three to two with Counselor Scott and Noble voting against the motion. Okay, we do not have any ordinances. Take us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Briefly, I just, um, you recall recently we had one of our city staff, obtained his PhD due to Jason Peak. Um, just this week, graduation, Cody Whittenburg, our stormwater program manager, also achieved the degree of PhD. We want to congratulate him. We have getting more and more doctors on board.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
That is, that is good news. All right, uh, councilors, do you guys have anything, any miscellaneous items?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I, all I've got is tomorrow morning Counselor Weaver will be on the radio at 8:15, 7:80 a.m., and on the 21st, Vice Mayor Hopkins will be. And then I just wanna say congratulations to all OSU graduates for graduating, and then also to, uh, all staff, faculty, and all their students at OSU for another successful school year, so, good work. Okay, anything for upcoming meetings? Okay, that's gonna take us down to appointments. Oh my, oh, so. Okay, we've got appointments for both Library Board and the Public Housing Authority. On the Library Board, uh, there were three members whose terms have expired. Uh, I can do this in one fell swoop, if it's all reappointments. Okay, I would nominate Thomas Warren, Sally Harris, and Monica Turek to be reappointed to the Library Board.
Second.
Motion and a second, or nomination and a second. And that is approved five to zero. Uh, then on Public Housing Authority, I would nominate Ruby Manning to complete the term of Dolly McClary on the Housing Authority Board.
Second.
Nomination in a second. And that appointment is also approved five to zero. And then I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting. We have a motion and a second? Okay. It's first full-blown meeting, isn't it? I think you're doing wonderful, thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor. All right. And that passed five zero, we are adjourned to City Council, which takes us to Stillwater Utility Authority Meeting, and we will call the May 6, 2013 Stillwater Utility Authority Meeting to order. Consent docket, we have minutes from April 15. Is there, does anybody wish to remove that from the consent docket?
Not at this time, sir.
Move, approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm gonna talk slower so she can get there. I apologize, so. Motion and a second on the consent docket. And that passes five to zero. That takes us down to General Orders, revisions to Waste Management Fee Schedule. Mr. Blankenship?
Good evening, Trustees Dan Blankenship, SUA Director. Uh, I'm here this evening to...
I'm sorry, I did-
That's okay.
I did make a mistake, and I apologize.
I'll sit down.
Uh, we did have one request to speak for an item not scheduled for public hearing, and so I apologize for bringing up early. Mr. Davis, I apologize about that also. We have a request for Michael Davis.
Michael Davis, 2602 North Park Drive in Stillwater, Oklahoma, 74075. My concern is the fee schedule, and that's what I'm, I'm addressing. I have a prepared statement, should run four minutes, 30 seconds.
Counsel prepared to give a little extra time on?
The proposed citywide curbside recycling program is in effect mandatory. Residents will be charged whether they participate or not. Mandatory recycling is objectionable. No, one size does not fit all. I live where every dollar counts for survival. Moreover, mandatory curbside recycling is unethical, unlawful, and unconstitutional, in my opinion. The Fourteenth Amendment, for an example, in Section 1, does not allow depriving any citizen of life, liberty, or property without due process, forcing citizens to recycle sidesteps due process. Simply charge those only who choose to participate. To do so otherwise unethically flies in the face of the American right of choice. The right of choice is unique to our country, and it must be preserved at all cost. More to the point, mandatory recycling opens the door to common law extortion, i.e. the Hobbs Act, i.e. under color of official right. Under color of official right has resulted in the successful prosecution of a wide range of officials, including those serving on federal, state, and local levels. Point is, the office itself provides the coercive element of under color of official right. Once mandatory curbside recycling is enforced or imposed, the minimum fee has grounds now to extend, to expand without a ceiling. Now, that is bait and switch. Bait you in on one fee and switch to the higher rate at some point in the future, in my opinion. So the question that begs to be answered is why would the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, force its residents to recycle? One can only conclude that mandatory curbside recycling is nothing more than an attempt to recover losses incurred from a failed collection center. That collection center operates in a margin of at least a negative 282 percent. That's in the red. That is in accordance now with figures obtained from waste management analysis. This was an update, uh, of, um, November 29th of 2012. Moreover, on the, uh, 13th of November of 2012, the Stillwater News Press reported that less than one-half of eligible households in the Pilot area participated. Less than one-half of Pilot residents participated. Even utility officials must admit that although paper and plastics are the largest volume of recyclable materials, they represent the least amount of return value. Some cities in this state have decided to dump recycling for that reason. So simply charge those only who choose to participate and close the door to common law extortion. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Blankenship?
Trustees Dan Blankenship, SUA Director, um, I'm actually here this evening to, uh, make an introduction. Mr. Chris Knight, uh, I think, has been up here and presented to the trustees in the past in his role as the Waste Management Superintendent. Uh, as most of you know, several months ago, unfortunately, Mr. David Higgins, our Waste Management Fleet Manager, decided to move on, left a big hole in our organization, but, uh, Mr. Knight has stepped up, and he's been serving as our Waste Management, uh, Manager since that time. He's done an outstanding job, and, uh, he's here to make the presentation of the report, uh, and then, uh, between him, he and myself will, uh, answer questions. So, Chris, if you wanna come on up, and I know you've got something here, and hopefully we can, uh, get to it so you can make your presentation.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Galloway, Chris Knight, I'm the City of Stillwater Waste Management Manager. Um, the, uh, resolution that is presented to you, uh, the main purpose of the resolution, of course, is to, um, add the curbside recycling fee to the remaining areas of the city. This summer, we will be implementing the rest of the city. Initially, in the past, the fee that was brought to you was just for the Pilot Program. And along with that, um, we have also, uh, added a few things that you can see in the report. Um, we have had a, uh, a lot of our outside-the-city limit customers have, uh, requested for the curbside recycling program, and initially, we didn't, uh, include them. And, uh, we are wanting to include them in this resolution to give them the opportunity to do so, participate in the curbside recycling program. We didn't initially include them basically because, uh, we wasn't for sure far as internally, we didn't wanna take away from inside-the-city limits from the service that we provide. But after reviewing after the Pilot Program, we feel that we can provide service to the outside-the-city limit users with not, uh, you know, hurting what we do inside the city limits. We would also like to, uh, we are, next year adding, um, a bulb eater to the Convenience Collection Center. Um, with that, it, it will be able to recycle, will crush fluorescent bulbs, and also remove the mercury from the bulbs to prevent that from going to the landfill. Currently, here in, in, in the city, most bulbs just go directly to the landfill, and the mercury does too. Um, the bulb eater will remove the mercury from the bulbs, crush the bulbs, and then we would, uh, uh, the, the company that we're buying the bulb eater from will come collect the crushed bulbs and the mercury. Um, with that, uh, there is a disposal fee for getting rid of those crushed bulbs, and we're recommending a 25 cents, uh, per bulb fee at the Convenience Collection Center. Also, with going through, uh, the financial analysis as we do every year, um, over the last couple of years on our street sweeper program, with the, uh, revising of how we do it operational, and also the purchase of the air sweeper that we, uh, purchased within the last couple of years, we see that, uh, we can reduce the fees for, uh, what the citizens pay for the street sweeping service. If there's any questions, I'd...
Yes, I, I might have misread the item. I was under the impression that we were raising the garbage collection rates. We're not, we're just trying to add the other neighborhoods that were not included in the recycling program?
We will be raising those also with the, uh, the CPI this year, 2.1 percent. So yes, all fees will be going up also.
So I, I thought I read rate increases.
Yeah, it's actually, uh, the, the, the rate increase is, uh, the auto, automatic annual increase that's based on the CPI. Um, that is, uh, that happens each year, and, uh, the, uh, the increase for this past year was a 2.1 percent. So it's, it, it happens, um, like I say, automatically. It's not, the council's not asked to take any action, or trustees aren't asked to take any action on that.
And it's, it's my recollection, the past council did give guidance to the, to the staff that, uh, automatic rates annually were the way to go so that we didn't have to sign off on them. Personally, I like the responsibility of assigning off on a rate increase if I'm, that's what I'm elected to do, so if I'm not willing to sign off on a rate increase, I personally don't think I should be here. So, uh, that part of the discussion isn't something that I'm in favor of.
They, the, yeah, it was actually in 2007 when all of the rate resolutions were updated, and we included the provision for the annual increase of up to 3 percent or the, uh, CPI, South Central's, uh, CPI, whichever's less. And that, and that's been in, like I say, in, uh, in practice or in use since, uh, 2007.
I think the, at least the theory on that was to prevent going multiple years and then making hard hits on the customer. Sometimes cities have a habit of waiting four or five years and then adding 10 or 15 percent to catch up. When you do it 1%, 2%, 2.5% each year, a little more.
That's a-
Easier for customers.
I would wholeheartedly agree. That's a terrible practice. We should be reviewing our rates every year.
We do.
And I'm sure you do.
We do. In fact, that's why we're recommending a rate reduction on our sweet, street sweeper, is because, uh, through that rate review, um, we have, uh, determined that, uh, the cost of service. And in fact, uh, maybe I could talk just a little bit, little bit about that as far as how we, uh, how we set our rates, if that's something that you'd like to talk about. Okay, um, basically, the SUA has an obligation to ensure that the rates are adequate to meet the financial requirements of the utility. In order to ensure that that obligation is met, we utilize what's called an accrual, also known as a utility basis for, uh, utility rate setting. The, the steps involved in that, uh, first of all is to, to take a look at the cost of service. Um, the cost of service, uh, includes, uh, operation and maintenance. Uh, that's simply, uh, personnel, materials, and services. Uh, the depreciation of whatever assets that we have, uh, and then what's called a rate of return. Say we buy, purchase a street sweeper for $150,000. We depreciate that over the life of the sweeper, and then it's time to buy a new sweeper. Well, seven years down the road, five years down the road, it's $25,000 more than what we paid. And so that rate of return is our means for recovering, uh, that additional cost into the future. Uh, tho, so those are the three primary elements, uh, of the cost of service. Uh, then what we do is we take a look at our, uh, customers and our customer classifications. And for waste management, we simply have three customer, customer classifications. One of us is a residential customer, one of us is a commercial customer, and, and then we break out the street sweeping, uh, separately because it's a totally different service. Uh, street sweeping charges are billed to all utility customers within the city of Stillwater, whether you're a, uh, electric utility customer, a water utility customer, or a waste management. You can be one or all of the above, but if you're a U, SUA customer, you get billed the, uh, the street sweeping fee. Uh, commercial, I think both commercial and residential are pretty well self-defining. Uh, with, uh, one point of clarification on the residential, there's multiple residential services that we provide. Uh, we provide the, uh, curbside garbage collection. Um, we're expanding into the curbside residential or into the curbside recycling collection. The Convenience Collection Center is for residential use. Uh, and then also the, um, green waste collection. And so what we do is to, in order to calculate our rates for the residential service, uh, we take those, those four elements, we look at what are the costs of those, and then we allocate those among our 12,000-plus residential, uh, customers. And so by, by then, by taking that rate, or the revenue requirement, then we're able to, uh, design a rate to, uh, recover those costs equitably among the, uh, customer classifications. That's a simple or a, uh, short explanation of the rate-making process.
And I agree with that rationale 100 percent, but you led off by saying the rate was based on compared to an index.
Uh, the, uh, the increase, the annual increase is, is, is based on an index. But we, we look at that, uh, on an annual basis, and in the situation like we are here with the, uh, with the street sweeper, we're recommending a, a reduction. If, uh, we get into a situation where, uh, in the future that the, either the residential or the commercial rates, we're in a similar situation, we'd be back here- rates, we're in a similar situation, we'd be back here doing the same thing.
And I know this seems like I'm picking on waste disposal, I don't mean.
That's, that's what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, that just happens to be.
That's the subject at hand, yes, absolutely.
But I'm very sensitive to rate increases and we have been raising rates consistently year over year and I never see information about how our rates compare with other municipalities. I think that ought to be a factor in the equation. I would like to know how my rates compare across all the utilities.
We'd be happy to provide that information to you, but I can tell you that rates are going to be subjective based on the philosophy of the organization.
That's right.
Also what the stat, the level of service that they provide, what the condition of their infrastructure is. There's a lot of unknowns that go into that and when you just look at a number that you don't see.
But still, that's a factor that we should consider, in my view, but that's just.
Some cities subsidize utilities with taxes. Some use utilities to subsidize taxes.
And some cities use their utilities to fund general, fund operations.
Which is the City of Stillwater. In fact, that's probably the fourth element is any of the excess revenue in which in the, in the Waste Management area, we target a 10 to 15 percent is kind of our target when we're looking at setting the rates so that there is excess revenue to transfer to the general fund to supplement the general fund activities.
I just remember last year when we were having this whole discussion on waste, we had the big study session discussion.
Yep.
And we were actually making money and.
Yeah.
It's important that Waste Management pay for itself, but.
Absolutely.
If I had a choice between a rate increase and reducing the amount that goes to the general fund, my preference would be reducing the amount going to the general fund.
And we can do that because it's designed to, like I say, we're, we're, our target, we target 10 to, 10 to 15 percent and I can tell you the rates that we have in this rate resolution, we project that the total margin on that is 11 percent, approximately $509,000. We could reduce our, our rates by $509,000 and make zero transfer to the general fund. But that's $509,000 that you're either going to have to cut out of the general fund or find some other resource to cover that with.
Heard her talking about all this money we got.
I think, I think one thing, if I may. Mayor, may I comment? Appreciate it, in, in Mr. Blankenship's presentation, I think it really needs to be pointed out when we're determining the cost of service for waste, particularly residential, there's several components. There's picking up the trash at the curb, there's picking up recycling at the curb, there's the Convenience Collection Center, and then there's the green waste pickup. Those don't have individual fees. They all go together to determine the overall cost of dealing with waste. Each citizen has a choice of which of those four they want to avail themselves out of. You pay for all of them, but you can just do curbside trash and nothing more. You can do curbside trash and put grass clippings out, or you can do grass clippings and recycling, or you can go to the convenience center if you want to use them all or you only use one. It doesn't, it's, they're not priced separately and it leads to some confusion like I think Mr. Davis's point, there isn't a recycling fee added to bill.
We added it to the garbage.
We were very careful to explain to the council and the public, there were increased costs from having curbside recycling and there were some savings. When all of those were calculated, the impact on the total trash bill is $1.57. That's not a recycling fee. It's been labeled as the recycling fee, but it's the necessary adjustment to accommodate additional service. But again, if, we could calculate the amount that, of the trash bill that is made up of people putting out grass clippings and yard waste, then we could call it a yard waste fee and you'd have the same argument, people in apartments say, I've never used that service. So there is one single waste fee that accounts, covers the cost of all waste options and each citizen may or may not use all the options. We don't have separate prices for each service. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yeah, that is correct. It's a, it's is a, it's based on the customer classification, the, the residential customer class. We actually have multiple fees within that depending on the size. It's all based, we have a pay-as-you-throw system, so it's based on the size of your trash can, which, which in this situation with the recycling, one of the things that I think is, is a real benefit, you can actually reduce your cost by recycling because under the rate schedule, the fee for a 96-gallon cart is $16.93. If we did not do the recycling, it would, we could lower that cost to $14.36. You just have your 96-gallon cart and you put everything in it. But with the recycling, you can downsize to a 64-gallon garbage cart, put 64 gallons of garbage, then you have 96 gallons for recycling and it'd be $14.82. You, you actually pay less and have more.
And I would have done that.
Yeah, and you pay less and you have more disposal capacity. So from that perspective, I think it's a very good thing if you choose to participate.
Just a quick question, you may not know, but.
Yes, sir.
How, how are we doing about recycle or reducing the tonnage that's going into the landfill? I know that's one of the things that we talked about that should be a cost saving to everybody.
That it's, it is a cost, it is less costly to process the recycled materials than it is to take it to the, the landfill. That's just the processing component of it though, but it's more costly because of the collection. Of the, the number one cost element in the recycling, at least the curbside recycling portion, is the collection cost. If you're looking for the most cost-effective approach, the absolute least-cost approach is to put everything in a cart and haul it to the landfill. Because of the market, it does not pay to recycle or doesn't pay for itself. It actually, that $1.57 is, is the, after you look at the whole program, that's the additional cost per customer for us to be able to provide curbside recycling in Stillwater.
But, you know, when we talked about it last year, whenever it was, we never sold this program as we were going to save money.
Correct.
This is a responsibility that the community was willing to take on.
It's a choice.
It's an important choice.
Yes.
That we decided to make as a community.
It's.
I don't want any of my remarks to be interpreted as not being about the recycling program. I'm very much for it and think we should continue it. But if I could, I've noticed every spring when all of Dr. Noble's students go home, this is her fault. I notice a lot of curbside trash that really doesn't fit in a blue can, whether it has a black lid or a yellow. If you know what I mean. Do we have a handle on that yet to where people are calling for the special pickup? I mean, that cost, it seems, is being absorbed by the rest of the community.
Yeah, that is, in fact, the, and that's a good point, Trustee Weaver, is, we didn't touch on that. There are other services like twice-a-year special pickups that we provide to all of the residents or residential customers if they call for it. We, we'll even waive, this time of the year, we'll waive the drop-off fee for large items like furniture and things like that. But Chris, if you might come up and maybe address from an operational standpoint how that's going, please.
I would think there's a significant cost there and we're, that's a special customer.
Yeah, all of the, all of the special services that we provide like that are included, just like a move-in, a move-in special. If you move in and you've got a bunch of boxes and stuff like that, we'll come and, and pick that stuff up for no additional charge. Those are the other services that are included in that blended rate. But Chris, why don't you talk just a little bit about how that's going from a operational standpoint?
Well, this time of year, I mean, there is a lot more for us to pick up curbside when the students move out, so our tonnage is up far as what goes to landfill this time of year. I would say though, that our problem used to be probably five, 10 years ago was the, the piles that you see sitting at the, at people's homes, no one was notifying us that they were there. So they could sit around the neighborhoods forever, I mean, until someone finally reported it. I would say that we are, as far as that aspect, we're a lot further along than what we used to be today. We've worked, you know, with the, the landlords of the community and, you know, the processes of what they need to do to get that picked up because we do understand that they, they do have people move out on them and, and sometimes they don't even know when they have moved out. And then there's this big pile sitting in front of the house and how you're going to get rid of it. So they understand the procedures more than what they used to and they have, are participating more, so we're able to get those picked up a lot sooner than what we used to. We do have a larger amount, you know, as far as tonnage that we do dispose of this time of year, yes. And, and a lot of that, you know, of course, is not paid for, but, but at least it's not sitting around the community as long as it used to.
Trustee Noble, did you have a question? Earlier, it looked like you had a question. Not to put you on the spot, but I thought you did earlier, okay?
No, um, who's answering? Mr. Mayor, if I may? I don't want to, I don't know if I can really add anything of any value to everything that staff and, and the board has said. I will only speak from my point of view when I, when we were talking about the recycling program. And when we were looking at the recycling program, I literally turned to John, because he wasn't married yet, and I pulled my wallet out and I said, can I afford this? And I understand where you're coming from 100 percent when you talk about every dollar you have goes toward rather you're going to have the lights on or you're going to have food in your refrigerator. But I remind myself, it's not always going to be that way. And when I supported the recycling program, when it came on, I participated in the pilot program at my house and my business participates in the pilot program. To me, it's an investment, not an expense, and that was a justification that I had for it. I realize it's still money out of my back pocket, but as far as I'm concerned, every dime that I spend with this particular program is an investment that I make in my future. And I don't know that you'll find someone at my age that is as conscious about their money as I am. That came out wrong, I meant that another way, I apologize. So I would say the rate structure, I understand there's a cost. Like Mr. Blankenship said, it's not easy, but I believe it's very necessary. I have often voted against rate increases. Sometimes the council doesn't always agree. I don't always agree with them. But rate increases in this instance, I think are necessary. I think that it is an investment and I realize that not everyone is going to take advantage of it. Someone in the future will. And I hope that as we become more conscientious and more communities take proactive steps, I hope that we can be a leader in that way. I wish more people could be considered in it, but I think we made the right decision and I would move in approval.
And before we finish tonight, that's a great lead into just a short two-minute presentation that we have here for you that, that I'd like to show you about, you know, what we're doing with our Waste Management program and, and how we're affecting the future of our community.
Before you show the program, I do have a question. I, it's, I, I, one of the requested changes is to allow the curbside recycling to the outside city limits customers.
Yes, sir.
Their rate increase includes that $1.50, all.
Yes, yes, sir.
Outside city limits include, even though.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
They're being treated the same as inside.
Absolutely, absolutely.
At the outside rate.
At the outside rate.
Outside rate.
Right.
It's actually a little more.
Is that a larger rate?
Yes, in fact, it's, I can tell you specifically, outside the city limits for a one gallon 96, 196,000, okay.
196-gallon.
Can someone help me out, please, because I'm off.
196-gallon cart.
Yes, one, one of what the mayor, or mayor said is $30.49 outside of the city. Inside of the city, it's $27.71. Thank you for your help. I was in desperate need. Chris, do you want to fire, let's, let us, do we have more questions? Chris, once we go ahead and make this, go ahead and make this program here, it's a two-minute film and, and then we can proceed.
I would like to just say real quick, I appreciate your thoughts, Councilman Scott, and I believe this is a perfect time for what everyone's been saying right here about recycling. And this is going to show you where our youth of the community, our future leaders of this community are as far as our recycling program. Over the last few months, we've been working with Monty Harper, who is an award-winning a song, children's songwriter, and the Will Rogers Elementary, fourth and fifth grade classes to write, write recycling songs. They came up with six songs. We got a little segment of each song here for you and also some video of the artwork that they have made for the CDs. There will be CDs made which will be given to each kid that participated. And also, we decided we're making a little contest out of the songs to where the citizens of the community can go and vote for their favorite song. And that is actually still going right now until Wednesday. So if anyone would like to go and vote for their favorite song, I definitely encourage that. They can go to montyharpor.blogspot.com or stillwirerecycles.blogspot. And, a lot of blog spots. Anyway, I encourage everyone to do so because they put a lot of work into it and they're great. And it'll show you, when I show you this, that where our youth are in the community far as recycling.
(Singing) Lots of nature's in trouble. Trash wants its revenge. Everybody recycle. Or it's gonna get worse. You can't trash it. We take our use. You can't trash it. We still have use. You can't trash it. We're the trash that sucks and bad. Don't you put us in the garbage stack, word. Time to see oblivious, but it's really obvious. We all need to throw away less. Curbside karma. We're here to be concerned. We recycle everything. We feel the trash. Go, 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 recycle stop. Go, 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 recycle stop. Feel the wrath of nature. Feel the wrath of nature. When we make a mess. When we make a mess. The curbside recycling is easy. Easy, easy, easy as counting to one. Thanks to the buck with the yellow top. Curbside recycling is fun, fun, fun. It's fun to recycle. It's a circle of trash. It's the right way to go with your after-party bash. Get your red solo pants, get your round paper stacks, get your soda pop bottle, let your green monkey back down. Recycle the party. Slow, huh, huh, recycle, oh, yeah. Recycle the party. They're a little bit old now.
And this, this was something that Chris and his staff worked with, the folks at school and the songwriter, and I was just absolutely amazed when I saw that and I, you know, it's, it's making the impact at the right level in this community of a, a very positive.
I do have one more question. Is it, Mr. Knight, is it, I believe you told me that Mr. Blankenship's one that did all the art for the video?
Yes, he actually worked all night on that.
I want to be credit.
I'm not that good.
Okay, just, just making sure. I didn't want to give someone else credit.
No, I really couldn't.
Okay, any other questions?
I can't take credit for that.
Any other questions for Mr. Blankenship or Mr. Knight?
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us down to resolutions and we have resolution number 2013-1 under SUA. It's the resolution adopting the rate structure.
It's the resolution adopting the rate structure.
Okay. Commissioner Scott already made a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have made a motion, I would move approval.
On the resolution, before we just...
On the resolution.
Okay.
I misspoke earlier when I said I moved approval, but if the question's been called, then I'm...
What, the motion to adopt the resolution?
Move, res, move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a, a motion to adopt the resolution? Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a second.
Discussion.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Would, uh, council consider removing the automatic rate increase feature from the
Do you mean on this resolution or on future resolutions?
On this one.
On this one?
We are voting on 2013-1, right?
Rates that go into effect July 1.
Right.
So here in two months. Um, how, before I proceed on that, I need, I would need, it's my understanding that these rates are the basis for the budget that we've been working on, and I would want to know how it impacts that.
Excuse me?
Um, I think the statement of getting, taking the automatic rate increase, just the automatic, I think that has a lot of validity, validity in something we need to address. We may be, I want to know how much we have to undo with that move.
This existing, this existing resolution on the, the automatic rates, I think you would have to visit, uh, rescinding the resolution or passing another resolution, I don't think.
The second, yeah, if, if you were to adopt a different resolution, then that's what the, the structure would be going forward.
I don't believe the automatic's included in this resolution.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Is it? Okay. There it is.
Okay. Thanks. I would say, we, I mean, if we want to deal with that, then I would think we need to hold up this adoption until we can see what the true impact of that would be.
I can tell you...
Let's hear it.
It's, it's approximately $100,000.
$100,000?
Yes, sir. Yeah, 2.1 percent equates to approximately about $100,000.
So that's $100,000 in revenue that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
In 2014.
In 2014.
But what does that mean in future years? The council won't see that unless you bring something...
Well, yeah, if you, if you remove, uh, out of the, uh, the, the end of the, the resolution, the automatic increase, that means each year we will have to come back to the trustees, um, and advise you of what, uh, our costs are, and tell you what, uh, kind of increase or not increase, or what, whatever the case may be, what are the, what whatever adjustment might be necessary to, to meet, uh, the revenue requirements.
That might be something we can talk about.
Yeah, so it's really, Trustee Weaver, what I'm hearing you say, tell me if I'm wrong, it's really two, twofold step here. One is no automatic increase this year, and let's look at changing the resolution that calls for the automatic increase, is that what you're saying?
On this particular item, I'm concerned about the rate increase period, but I have even more concern about voting for an item that sets up an automatic rate increase in future years that we don't even see or consider. And I get hit by customers all the time saying, "Why did you raise those rates?" Well, I didn't. That was a past council, six, seven years ago, that did that. And, you know, see what I mean?
I, I hear what you're saying.
I'm not, I, I think they've made a good argument for why the rate increase is, is reasonable and necessary for 2014, sort of. But it's really that automatic feature that's bothering me.
I agree with you, counsel.
But this resolution doesn't create the automatic.
Yeah, well, it can, it perpetuates it. It perpetuates it, so you would have to remove that. In fact, at the end of the resolution, you have to delete that, that language. Uh, if you look at the resolution where it says, "Be it further resolved that on January 1, 2014," and on January 1 each year, you'd have to, uh, take that, "be it further resolved." That paragraph would come completely out. You can, you can delete that paragraph from the resolution, and, and I think that that will, that will achieve your objective, uh, and then, uh, after the first of the year next year, uh, we'll be back and advise you of what our costs are, uh, and what revenue requirements are, and then it'll be your choice, uh, to adjust rates if you so choose to do.
And I realize that past councils have made that recommend, you know, that directive to staff and...
Absolutely, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, that, that'll, that'll achieve your objective, and I have no, we're going to do the calculations, and we're going to review it anyway, uh, it's just a matter of then coming up and presenting it to you, which, uh, is not a problem at all.
But this resolution's only dealing with the waste management side.
Right.
We have the same...
We'll be back with water, because we're, uh, we still have to implement some steps in the cost of service analysis. Uh, electric, uh, if, and, and I'm hearing that, maybe you want me to come back with electric to, to revisit that, because the electric rates do have that in it, uh, and so, we're probably going to be re-looking at that, um, because of the change in our, change in our contract with GRDA, so I suspect that we'll be revisiting that, uh, before the end of the year anyway. So, uh, we will, when we revisit, uh, when we redo the, the water and wastewater, um, I'll, I'll take care of that, and that'll probably be within the next couple meetings, and then we will bring the electric one back to you, uh, if, uh, to address that same situation. But to take care of this, this, this time, you simply delete that one paragraph out of the resolution, and it will eliminate any future automatic increases.
If you want to do that, you'll have to actually have to make a motion to amend the motion, and the second that's pending on the floor.
I hear you. So...
Do you have a motion in the second?
There's a motion in the second to adopt this resolution as is, and I, I guess, Council Weaver, I'm kind of, again, two, two-fold, I mean, I guess, what, what would your, how would you desire to amend that motion?
So you can't make me happy, no matter what we do, because I support the rate increase. So, you know, the motion's on the floor.
If he wants to remove this motion, I'll remove my second.
Right. Mr. Mayor, if it would please count, if it would, if it would please the board, I would withdraw my motion for approval, or my approval of the resolution, and we just make a new motion.
And I would, I would remove my second. So we rate it for new motion.
All right, Trustee Weaver, is there a motion you'd like to make?
No, sir.
Okay, throw us one.
I don't blame you. Don't like the rating.
Show these motions, I'll, I'll help you with that when we get done. I move that we accept resolution 2013-1, and re, and strike from the recommended motion, and providing for subsequently annual rate increases.
Second. Does that mean the last paragraph?
That means the last sentence.
The last, well, actually, that whole paragraph. Be it fuller resolved, that whole paragraph would come out.
Real resolution, that last paragraph.
Then we'll do the whole last paragraph.
Yes, that will take care of it.
So the motion is to, just clarify the motion, because you haven't spoken it yet, we can clean it up. The motion is to approve resolution number, whatever it is.
SUA. 2013-1.
2013-1.
And to remove the final paragraph regarding, uh, automatic rate increases in its entirety.
Annual rate increases.
Annual rate increase.
Is that your motion?
It's my motion.
Is this your second?
And I second.
Is that your second?
Second from Trustee Noble. Okay, any discussion? Okay. Let's vote on this res, on this motion. And that passes 5 to 0.
Very good, and we'll be back with the water and the electric rates to do the same thing. Thank you.
Okay, where am I? Um, oh, anything from, any of the trustees, I guess, anything?
Nothing for the report, no.
Nothing to report, sir.
Anything from trustees?
I appreciate the council considering that, uh, automatic adjustment pulling out of there, I appreciate that very much.
Anything else?
That's time, Mr. Mayor.
Entertaining motion to adjourn SUA.
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn. Passes 5 to 0, we are adjourned.